How are you? You good? Are you good? Do you need anything?
Very good.
Well, maybe we won't have it today, but we'll chip on it. Okay, cool. I appreciate it. Yeah.
How about the door?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I have a key. Oh, wait, no, we didn't um.
Door.
Yes, please. Okay, thank you. Can you see it?
No, I have my own tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I'll be here tomorrow.
All right.
It looks empty. I'll be at the CDC in the morning. I'll probably be in about ten. People are wondering why not there.
Take pictures. Have a good night.
You too.
God. There should be two more people coming. Yeah.
We'll give him a couple minutes.
Okay.
I think Counsel Robinson is ready now, so we might get started.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's Education Committee. My name's David Ray. I'm the chairman of the committee, District Nineteen on the east side. We just have one presentation on tonight's agenda, but before we dig into that, let's go ahead and give our counselors an opportunity to introduce themselves, starting with the front row.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Paul Hart, representing District Eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Mike Dilk, District Twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keith Potts, District Two in Washington Township.
And John Barth, representing District Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. LeWai Robinson, representing District One.
Perfect. Tonight, we've got a presentation from Indianapolis Public Schools. We've got Patrick Harrell with IPS. He's going to present, and so I'll just turn it over to you, and we'll just probably hold questions till the end.
Great. Can folks hear me? Good. Good evening. I appreciate you having me here. My name is Patrick Harrell with Indianapolis Public Schools. Superintendent Johnson and Andrew Stropes send their regards. They had originally planned to come to this, but I think when it got rescheduled this night, they happened to already have commitments, so they apologized for not being here in person. I wanted to go through our rebuilding stronger plan. Commissioner Potts, Counselor Potts has been part of a council, a committee that we have had, giving us feedback as IPS is thinking about our next generation of what our school system looks like, and so we're going to run through that together. I'm particularly eager at the end of this to get any feedback that you all have on the direction that we are headed. We also, as you'll see from this presentation, are planning to present to the committee and more broadly to the community at the end of, at the beginning of September, a first draft of an actual plan for what our redesign of our school system would look like, and that's the moment at which we're going to want a lot of feedback from the community, from this group, and from many other people across Indianapolis, and so we are very much in a phase where we are looking for and eager for feedback and input as we're building this plan collectively. What I want to do with this time, and again, I appreciate you for having me here and giving me this time, is talk through this idea of rebuilding stronger within IPS, talk about why this is an important moment for us to do this, what we are thinking about at this moment, and again, knowing that we want to continue to be informed by our community's feedback, and then talk about next steps. So we'll start with IPS's 2025 plan. We put that out, obviously, in 2020, a roadmap for where we wanted to go that was very focused on four things. Number one, we wanted to improve achievement for all students. Number two, we wanted to in particular focus on our Black and Latinx families and students, and make sure that they were showing dramatic gains. Three, we wanted to focus on increasing graduation rates, and four, increasing enrollment. I will say with that last one, IPS currently is very much a national outlier in this question of enrollment. Almost all urban areas across the country are seeing pretty dramatic losses in enrollment across their districts. IPS has stayed relatively steady over the last eight years. If anything, we've gone up, and I think a lot of that has been to do with our creative partnerships with charter partners that we have, many of them authorized by this body in the mayor's office, and so we also have leaned into this idea of choice and have a lot of choice, or what some people think of as magnet schools. So we've got some winds under our belt, but we really need to double down on a lot of that. We all, on this first and second piece of academic performance, when we launched the 2025 plan, we made some big bets around our first strategic priority of academic performance. We realigned our curriculum. We're focusing on professional development and additional supports for our lowest performing schools, and we're already seeing some progress. In the results, academic performance results that were released very recently by the department, what we saw is, in this past year, we saw large, significant gains in our academic performance and gains that outperformed the state average gains. And so we see that some of those early bets are starting to pay off, but we also recognize that we have a very long way to go. So we're excited about these initial academic gains, but we need to redouble our efforts, and more importantly, and this is the idea behind rebuilding stronger, we need to change the structural conditions that will better enable continued academic progress. One of the things that we did with the committee, and we'll talk more about the community-based committee that Counselor Potts and others were on, but we talked very candidly about some of the challenges that IPS is facing, and if I'm being honest, they are daunting. A couple of them I have captured here are facilities footprint across Indianapolis. We have too many buildings that are in poor condition and inappropriately small. We have buildings, for example, that are built for elementary schools for about two hundred students total. And when we think about what we need to operate at scale and staff a building that provides all students the opportunities that they need, that's just a building that is too small. When it comes to enrollment, we have structural practices in place. Some, many of you may know of our choice schools, Center for Inquiry, Montessori, and others. They have conditions that set those schools and those students up for stability and therefore success, and those schools are seeing increasing enrollment over time, not surprisingly, because stability helps students succeed. Stability is good for families. We also have neighborhood schools that do not have those same stable conditions, and so we see very different enrollment trends at each one of those types of schools, and we see just inequity between that schism, between our choice schools that are set up for stability and our neighborhood schools that are not. On the finance side, we know our finances are very limited. We also have a mix of buildings and programs that's just not sustainable. In particular, I talked about that idea of buildings that their enrollment is too small to have a scale that allows us to have sustainable enrollment, so that's a big challenge. And then from a student experience side, a lot of our financial limitations, many of them based on the fact that our schools are too small and have too small of an enrollment, don't have the extra dollars to invest in a compendium of curricular and extracurricular activities that all students really deserve. So these are some of the fundamental challenges that we have that we really want to take on through rebuilding stronger. We also, again, coming back to this idea of academic achievement as our first priority, we know that across the state, as a state, our Black and Latinx students, just eight percent of our Black students are statewide passing both ELA and math, and fifteen percent of Latinx students. That's across the state. IPS, it's more dismal than that. Just three percent of our Black students are passing both, and five percent. So we need to be really clear-eyed about the amount of work that we have to do to improve educational achievement, but also in particular, education achievement for our Black and Latinx families in particular. And so what we're proposing is a dramatic reorganization of our school system to ensure that we can invest across the board and achieve the kind of academic performance particularly for our Black and Latinx students that we know we have to be achieving. So we want to think really boldly about academic programs that will meet the diverse needs of our students. We know that IPS in particular serves a very diverse community, particularly by race. We want our schools to have the foundational conditions that create stability and set our students and our schools up for success, and we want those conditions to create stability across the system and to ensure our facilities are really high quality and our investments are aligned with achieving those outcomes for all of our students. So this question of then, what is this reorganization plan? I've used words like bold and reimagine. What are we trying to do? We are trying to align all of our work around operating and funding strategically so that we can support academic performance. What we are doing with the community is outlining a list of potential facility programmatic and academic changes that would be implemented over the next three years that would really then persist for a very long time, because what we would want to do is structurally change the conditions that sets all schools up in, up for success. Like I said, we want this to be a really iterative process, so the plan that we're going to release in early September is the fruit of a lot of work that our board has done engaging the community, the committee's feedback to us, and then once we release that draft plan, we'll want a lot of feedback so that we can continue to refine and improve that. We ultimately are striving toward a fall presentation to our board for a vote on this plan that would then go into implementation. I've talked a little bit about ways in which we've involved the community, but we'll start at the top with Phase One. Our commissioners started by going out to all of their constituents, and they did this in the fall of 2021, and they started with a really big question of, imagine the best version of IPS. What would that look like? What would be true? And they came back with a set of guiding principles that then we used to start to orient how we're going to look at data and how we're going to engage the community to try to figure out where are we falling short of those guiding principles and where can we make significant progress? So that was Phase One. Phase Two started in the winter of this year and ended pretty recently, and it was a diverse set of community members. We had government-elected officials. We had community partners. We had families. We had educators. We had principals, and so they got together to dive into four buckets of data. We'll go through those buckets of data, and I'll share with you some of their findings and feedback. And they have been giving feedback to inform our original, kind of our first kind of pre-draft of directionally what we're thinking about for the plan, and that's one of the things I'll talk about tonight. From here forward, we are then taking their feedback, and we are putting together a first draft that we will then want feedback on the community on to take a final draft to the board in the fall of 2022. Like I said, this committee is in advisory capacity, so they are not going to be the ones making the final recommendation. That will sit with the administration of IPS. They've been giving lots and lots of feedback on data that we've presented, ideas and proposals. They'll assist the administration in connecting all of this together, and they'll continue to provide feedback. They've told us things like, we need really strong programs for all of our students so that school is an exciting place to be. They've really pointed out what I mentioned earlier, this idea that neighborhood schools have low enrollment, have low stability conditions, and fewer offerings, and that difference between neighborhood schools and choice schools is just unacceptable. There's, they talked a lot about the opportunity for enrollment and focusing on our choice schools serving all students. We know that our choice schools skew towards our wealthier and our whiter families. And they also pointed out that all of the things that I described that set choice schools up for success are good things. How can we give those same stable conditions to our neighborhood schools? And so you'll see some of those things reflected in the direction that we're currently focused on. We know that we need to focus on, and again, our committee has told this over and over again, excellent equitable choices for all students. We need excellent curricular and extracurricular opportunities for all students. We need to make sure that we have supports that support the entirety of a child, the academic performance, but also the social emotional supports for a student, and we need physical buildings that are warm, safe, and well-kept. Our superintendent likes to say this, and I think it's very true, we can do really hard things, and that's what we're embarking on here. We can also do anything, but in a constrained world by finances and a whole bunch of other things, we can't do everything. And so this process needs to be one where we really do dream big, but we are also grounded in the real constraints that we have. We have to face the brutal facts of our financial position, our current facilities footprint, and so many other things that you'll see as we continue to go on here. And so in that spirit, some of the things that we started with were some of the challenges that we see. So our committee took a look, and you can take a look in more detail, but the graphic on the left essentially shows two things. It shows, number one, that we have a lot of buildings that are underutilized. So the percent of our utilization percent, when you look across the district, is relatively low, and we have a lot of buildings that are of poor or low quality. In fact, for example, if we were to make investments to bring every one of our schools up to kind of industry-accepted standard, that would take almost a half-billion-dollar investment, which, again, we can do anything, but we can't do everything. That we can't do everything certainly comes into play here. And so what we heard when we presented this to our committee was that we just, we have too many schools and we have too low of utilization. We heard lots of things about what it means to operate so many schools that are very small, so many schools that are not of the kind of quality that we think our students deserve. We heard people talk about this question of consolidation. How do we need to start thinking about reducing our physical footprint because of these challenges? The second thing we took a look at as a committee was this question of enrollment. I mentioned these stable conditions, but I want to show you this data to really put a fine point on it. If you look at the graphic on the left side of the screen, but if you look at the bars to the right, what you'll see is, on the one bar, it shows our choice schools, and it shows that when you look at all students that enroll at a choice school over the course of the year, ninety-six percent of those students are enrolled at that school by the September state count date. So just four percent of the student body adds to a choice school over the course of the rest of the year. That's an incredibly stable student population. We do that because we have very permissive transportation borders. If you go to a choice school, we basically say, as long as you live in the district, we'll get you there. If you move in the middle of the year but stay in the district, we'll keep you there. As long as the school has hit their limit of how many students they'll accept, we'll stop accepting new students, so it creates a very stable setup for our choice schools. Again, that's great, but if you look at the other bar at our neighborhood schools, seventy percent of their students are enrolled by September, which means that thirty percent of their student population comes throughout the rest of the school year. That doesn't necessarily mean that they add a thirty percent increase in their student population. That could mean thirty percent of their population churns. They have a bunch of students leave, but a bunch more students come back. When you think about what that means for students not having that stable condition and for the staff that are having to constantly reset expectations, that is really significant. So when you look at the data to the left of that, this shows enrollment trends over time. It shouldn't be surprising that our families see that and want that. Our choice schools, therefore, are significantly increasing in enrollment over time, while conversely, our neighborhood schools are decreasing in enrollment. I think, bottom line, we are setting our choice schools up for success by the stable conditions we create, and we are not doing the same for our neighborhood schools. This becomes particularly unacceptable when we realize that our choice schools tend to serve our wealthier and whiter families, and our neighborhood schools tend to serve our lower income and more of our students of color. This is something we need to confront and we need to address, because this sort of too tight setup isn't something that we can continue if we want to be a district that's focused on equity. When we shared this with the committee, we heard lots of very expected things. How do we replicate this choice experience to all schools? This idea of the disparity between choice and neighborhood schools? The idea that our proximity boundaries, this idea that if you live within a half-mile of one of these choice schools, you get preferential access, that drives a lot of these inequities of access. So we heard a lot of really, I think, very brutal and honest feedback about ways in which this is unacceptable. When we talked about finances, we had to be really clear-eyed about our budget and where things are going, and so much of this is based on the fact that we operate underscaled schools and have to float a lot of those underscaled schools, just the basic ability to staff themselves, which then drains a lot of our resources. And so we looked at data that showed that if the district essentially makes no change, in just a matter of a couple of years, you can see that orange line that goes dramatically down, we will run out of money, period. So not changing is not an option from the equity perspective that I talked about a moment ago, but also from the financial perspective. And so we've talked about different ways that we could change to change that financial picture. And so the committee pointed out IPS is not receiving the resources it needs. The district will go bankrupt without intervention or doing something dramatically different, or referendum, or referenda. Also, they pointed out how much of this is driven by the fact that we operate small schools that don't operate at scale, and then we need to essentially subsidize for those schools to continue to operate. The last thing we took a look at was what the student experience is like at schools, and so what this chart shows you on the left is that our choice school, when you just look at the number of extracurricular and curricular offerings, choice schools have more of these offerings than our neighborhood schools do. Our K-eight schools tend to have more offerings, both academic offerings, so we're thinking about things like for an eighth grader, the opportunity to take algebra, so that you can be on track by high school to take calculus. But we're also talking about language, foreign languages, or extracurricular sports and other clubs and activities. We see our K-eight schools have more offerings than our K-six and seven, eight schools. We also see that our neighborhood schools have fewer offerings than our choice schools. When you really drill down in all of this, it comes When you really drill down in all of this, it comes down to a question of scale. Our choice schools tend to be bigger because they're increasing in their enrollment. They have then more resources to invest not only in their staff, but also curricular and extracurricular activities. Our neighborhood schools tend to be smaller schools, and so they have fewer of those resources. What we're not saying here is that we are spending less money on our neighborhood schools. What we're saying here is, most of that money that we spend on our neighborhood schools has to go with the bare-bones staffing, and we have no extra money for the extra things that kids deserve. And it all comes down to this question of scale. And so if we can get all schools to a size that are at scale, then we would have the money both for the staffing and the extracurriculars. And so so much of this really kind of ties together, this idea of facilities and enrollment and capacity and all of this kind of comes together. And our committee really started to recognize this. This idea that the different sets of experiences students get based on the type of school, the scale of school that they go to matters enormously, and the fact that there is that difference isn't acceptable. Enrichment opportunities being so important for students to feel excited about school. And so we heard a lot of feedback on really needing to take that on. And so, based on all of that feedback from the committee, we wanted to align all of this. So what do we say is important and how do we execute on that? And so with this idea that the superintendent likes to say, we can do anything, but we can't do everything, and it has to be equitable, this feedback led us to a couple conclusions. Number one, we can do anything. We need more great schools, so we want to replicate and expand our highest-quality, highest-demand programs and offerings. Schools like our Center for Inquiry schools, our Montessori schools, our Butler Lab schools that are very high demand and are high-performing academically. We want to expand and replicate those because we know we have the demand and they perform well for students. And we need to invest more resources in all schools. But we can't do everything. We can't put more resources in all schools with the number of schools we have now, so we need to consolidate schools. And we need to think differently about how we configure grades. So when you think about a K-8 building that has 36th graders, 37th graders, and 38th graders, that doesn't give you the kind of scale that you need for algebra for eighth graders, or for foreign language, for a coach to do all sorts of athletics, and all of those things. And so we need to rethink how we do grade configuration so that we can get scale at all of our schools. And this final piece of it has to be equitable. I'll talk about eliminating the proximity priority, we'll talk about what that means. And then we're proposing something called enrollment zones, where we would essentially get rid of the distinction that I keep mentioning between neighborhood schools and choice schools, and give all of them those stable conditions that we talked about earlier. So we'll go through each one of those. The first one is more great schools. We want to replicate and expand our high-demand, high-performing programs. This increases enrollment across IPS. We know these are the programs that are showing increasing enrollment over time. It's a way to provide more equitable access. We have historically placed these high-demand programs in just a subset of our district, and so we want to prioritize expanding these programs, but to parts of our district that have not traditionally had access to these high-demand, high-performing programs. And so this would mean increasing seats at these existing schools and replicating to additional schools that would have these high-performing programs. I should note, one of the ways that we're thinking about doing this needs to be in connection with the community. So what we don't want to do is just drop new programs in schools whether or not the community is interested. We want to talk to those communities, see what they're interested in, and see if we can find good fits with existing strong programs. So that's the first one. Replicate and expand our high-performing, high-demand programs. The second is grade reconfiguration. You heard me preface this a little bit. We have a mix of K-6s, K-8s, and 7-8s, and we would want to shift to all K-5 schools and 6-8 schools. So we would have traditional elementary schools and then traditional middle schools. Again, with the goal of getting each one of those, the K-5s and the 6-8s, at scale so that you can have multiple teachers per grade that are able to collaborate. You can have more teachers across a smaller grade span so that you have more to invest in extracurriculars and after-schools and soccer and tennis and all sorts of things that students would get excited about during the school day and afterwards. It's also a way to provide a more robust set of offerings in schools, particularly in the middle grades. I mentioned that problem that we have with K-8s that have a small number of students at 6 through 8. If we expand to 6-8 schools, we can really make a much more robust middle school experience that prepares students for high school. The next thing that we're talking about is school consolidation. This probably doesn't come as a surprise based on everything I've talked about related to finance and facilities, but we need to think about closing or merging schools with both poor facility conditions, low utilization, and schools that just have, that are just undersized and can never be operated at scale. What this would do was, would allow the district to offer fewer schools that are at scale, that both have the resources to staff the building and provide all of the curricular and extracurricular opportunities that our students deserve. The next thing I mentioned is this idea of enrollment zones. Imagine, for example, dividing the district into quadrants. And then every family that lives within one of those quadrants has a choice of going to any school within that quadrant. So there are no longer neighborhood schools versus choice schools. Everyone within that quadrant can access any one of those schools. And if they move during the course of the year, we keep them at that school, as long as they move within that quadrant. But what we see when we look at movement trends across the district is that families don't tend to move from the far west side to the far east side. Families who move, move within a pretty proximate geography. It may happen that moving within that small geography in our current context moves them from neighborhood school A to neighborhood school B, and that's what causes the mobility that we see. But if we create these zones that capture most of the movement patterns within the district, and we've already started to map that, and there are very tight clusters, we can capture nearly all of that mobility and keep the students stable throughout the year, or in fact, throughout their entirety of their elementary or middle school experience. And so it's this idea of, exactly as one of our committee members saying, all of those great things about choice schools where we create more stability, how can we do that for all schools? And that's what we are proposing with this idea of zones. And so it very much is driven by this idea of equity. It increases access to all schools and increases stability at all schools, which is good for students and families, and it is good for schools. So we're excited about this. And then the last thing we would think about doing is eliminating proximity priority. This is very much in the weeds, but for those of you who are familiar with our very popular schools like Center for Inquiry, or Butler Lab, or Montessori, those schools have a half-mile radius, and if you live within that radius, you get preferential access to that school. What that has done is, a lot of our schools are located in pretty affluent neighborhoods. And so those schools have become inaccessible to nearly everyone except those students that live in the half-mile radius. What we would be able to do by reconfiguring grades is, a K-8 school, like a CFI school, would go from K-8 to K-5. All of the sudden, they would have a lot more classrooms because their 6th, 7th, and 8th grades aren't in that building anymore. So they can give out more seats at that same school. So we can at the same time offer more seats, and by getting rid of the proximity priority, make those seats accessible to everyone within that zone. And so it's this idea that you can try to have everyone win because you're offering more of what everyone wants and making it more accessible. So those are the potential solutions that we've put forward. I've gone through this quickly. We have a lot of hard things that we have to do, and we can do hard things. Like I said before, we can do anything, but we can't do everything. And so what you've noticed in this plan is this idea that there are real trade-offs. We want to think boldly about making an excellent and equitable school system, but that won't be easy, and that won't come with hard trade-offs. No one wants to close a school. We know that that is difficult and detrimental to communities, but we know what's more important is having truly excellent and equitable schools for all students. And so this is our first attempt at thinking about a direction that we would head for a plan that would be proposed in September for feedback so that we iterate and make it better. And then we would continue to, toward presenting this for board approval in October. And so this is the overall timeline. We've talked about this in general, but the important one here is, on September 1st, we will have a special called Board Meeting to outline the specifics of a plan that is currently being informed by the feedback from the committee that I mentioned. That is a first draft, a draft plan, and so from September forward, we will focus on community feedback to take a very specific plan and make it significantly stronger based on the community feedback that we hear. We would be particularly interested in city-county councilors providing feedback, since you are incredibly important constituents in this community. And then we would be working towards, hopefully in October, a board vote on our rebuilding stronger plan. So, I know I went through a ton. I will stop there and answer any questions, or I also have my computer out so I can take notes on any thoughts or feedback that you want me to capture and take back to our team.
Awesome, yeah, that's a lot to digest. Let's open it up for questions. Counselor Robinson, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your presentation. So, go back to the CFI discussion. I know you briefly went through some of the things you're doing with the schools and how the students come from the area, proximity where the schools are located. How do you, what's the plan to diversify those schools? Culture, number one, but then, number two, income? How you plan to diversify those CFI schools you have?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Robinson. I think the most important first thing for us to focus on is, how do we make sure all schools are places that are welcoming and supportive of all students? Where all students can see themselves in their staff, in their curriculum, in their student population. And so I think before we even start to think about diversifying a school, we first have to make sure it is a school where all students would feel safe and included and represented. So that's number one. And then I think, number two, from a structural standpoint, we need to get rid of the preference that precludes a lot of families of color from accessing a school in the first place. So that's this idea of getting rid of the proximity priority and switching to a zones-based system. The other thing that we've seen, we've been very informed by our experience with our high school switch. We went from a high school system that was a bunch of choice and then some neighborhood high schools to a system that is all choice. And when we made that switch, now we have a system where 95% of our eighth graders participate actively in choosing where they want to go to high school, and every one of our high schools has become more diverse and more integrated over time. And so what we've learned from that is, when everyone is participating on a level playing field, which takes a lot of work to make sure everyone knows about this, these opportunities, and has the same access. But when that happens, and when the kind of foundations create that, you immediately start to get more equitable access and more diverse populations at all of your schools. And so it's this combination of how do we make sure, first, Counselor Robinson, the schools themselves are welcoming, supportive, safe places, and the structures give everyone access who wants it.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman? So, thank you for your response, though. What are you going to do? I heard you tell me what could be done, what you need to do. What is IPS going to do to diversify those schools? What specific things would you be implementing for the 2023, 2022, 2023 school year that diversifies those schools?
So, what, here, I'll give some examples. So we will, and again, we're talking draft here, so none of this is anything that we are committed to. We want community feedback on all of this. But if we got rid of proximity priority, that would address the access piece. So how do we make sure that we don't have a preferential access and a non-preferential access, but everyone instead has access? We would also implement, and again, draft, but we would also implement zones so that imagine a quarter of the district now has access to and gets to choose any one of their schools. We've seen in a similar approach at high school, that has dramatically diversified our schools. And then that first piece really is something that we are currently doing and will continue to do, regardless of what happens with this plan, which is investments that we're making in racial equity training and making sure that all of our schools and staff members are working actively to create inclusive, safe, welcoming places for all students, in particular, Black and Latinx students.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your response.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. It was great to see many of our committees meeting sort of condensed into this one Sparknotes version for our committee here today, so thank you. Just a couple of quick questions or thoughts, just to make sure, just to clarify, I guess, for the public. The grade reconfiguration at the schools, would that be reflected in both choice and neighborhood schools?
Yes.
Very good.
That's the current plan.
And as far as programming goes in the schools, I know there are certain schools that have more opportunities for students as far as extracurriculars go. Is there an opportunity to create a sort of exchange program where students, if a program is not offered at their school, but it is offered after school at another, in another school in their zone, for example, that they'd be able to participate in, say, if they want to be in band, but their school doesn't have band, but the one a couple miles down the road does? Is there a way to sort of have an exchange program like that?
Yeah, that's a really interesting idea. I'm capturing that in my notes. That's definitely something to look into. I appreciate that.
Great. And then, one last thought, and I know we discussed this in the last committee meeting, but as the potential school closings and consolidations are considered, I just think it'll be really important to include the AMI, the Area Median Income, as a data point in those considerations, primarily so that lower-income communities are not disproportionately affected. Because if we are seeing those school closings, we want to make sure that they themselves are also happening in an equitable manner.
Great, yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Counselor Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions. One, I'm looking at your Slide 22, potential solutions, more great schools, replicate, expand, higher-quality, high-demand schools. I know for a while, and you've been able to take action on this, you've had some attraction and retention issues, and I think a lot of that had to do with what you're able to pay teachers, which I think I'm remembering that that was, has been trued up to some degree. But I guess my question is, I totally agree, replicating, expanding, and providing the best high-quality education, period, but that also suggests you have to have the best teachers and the best school leaders. So how do you feel about the horizon as far as attracting and retaining that kind of talent?
That's a tough question to ask right now because nationally and across the state, it is bleak. I mean, we are definitely, and this is not Indianapolis-specific, this is across cities and across states, across the country. This is a tough time to recruit and retain excellent teachers. And so I think that is going to be a challenge that there is no obvious solution to, and we're going to have to be very creative. I think one of the things that I would hope would be true is, in reimagining a school system that is dramatically more equitable and concentrates resources to create rich experiences for students will in itself be a draw to the district. I think we're also going to make significant investments as we think about replicating programs in teacher support and training to implement these specific curricula that I would hope would be partially a draw as well. But I think it would be naive of me to say anything other than you are identifying a industry-wide issue that's going to be a challenge over the next decade.
Yeah, it's not only an industry-wide, it's a society, right? Problem in my own industry, where I run a trade association, exact same problem consistently. Okay, so I know that's a huge challenge, but I, obviously, you're thinking hard about it. My other question gets to, Counselor Potts referenced it, and I'm looking at Slide 25, which is closing or merging schools. So that has a couple sort of downstream effects, right? One is, if a school is closed, then that particular neighborhood loses a piece of their stability, right? And so if it's not there, that could impact the long-term stability of the neighborhood and the ability of that neighborhood to be successful in the long term. But also, you face this scenario, and correct me if I'm wrong, where you're required to, if you're not using a school, to sell it to a charter school for a dollar, correct? So that's, you're not necessarily, even if there's equity or value to get out of that school, from a purchasing standpoint, there's, that's not even going to be there for you. So is there a reuse in mind for some of these schools that you're thinking of? Or do you, how do you manage that problem when your asset that you're going to take off your books isn't really an asset at all? It potentially could be a long-term liability.
Yeah, really good question. So to your second point, there is currently a state law that's called, often referred to as the Dollar Law, which is, an unused facility from a district must be made, if it's unused for a certain period of time, must be made available for purchase or rent by a charter entity for a dollar. Either sale for a dollar outright or rented for a dollar per year in perpetuity. And so you're right, that does take what would otherwise be assets that the district could then try to monetize and invest in students, and makes that very challenging. We are, though, I don't think at this point in the planning process are at the place where we have either identified individual schools that we would identify for consolidation, that would come later in the process, and then therefore, we are also not at the place where we would have And then therefore, we are also not at the place where we would have identified what specific reuse each one of those facilities might have. But what we are committed to is as consolidation becomes part of the process and as we begin to identify with the community what facilities those would be, how can we work with those individual communities to think about creative reuse of those buildings? So you could think, for example, about creative uses related to pre K or healthcare services or daycare services that could potentially meet the bar of IPS continuing to to use a building but creating a real benefit to a community. We wouldn't want to predetermine what those creative reuses were. We would want to work with the community to determine those. But we we are certainly eager to work with the communities, both because that could be an asset to the community and because, to your initial question, we recognize that the closure of a school building is deeply detrimental to the stability of a community.
And just one, and this is more of a comment, just I'm very tuned in to this issue, and I'm forgetting which former IPS school it it is, what the number is. But at located at Forty Ninth and Boulevard, had been used by the International School for a long time for their elementary school. So it's been off the IPS inventory for a long time, but they just left it and moved over to the Michigan Street campus. And to the great fortune of the neighborhood, that building is owned by Butler, and they have the ability and the capacity and the desire to invest a lot of money in it to make up for deferred maintenance that's happened for years and years and years. But most schools aren't going to be in that situation, right? So it'd be awful to have a school slowly deteriorating over time. But I know I know you knew that, but that's a that's a that's an additional challenge that I know you face. But so thanks for this information. This is very helpful to get this this tune up. Thank you.
Councilor Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My I've got a couple of questions here. And the first one is regarding to the the proximity change. So I'm fairly familiar with school transfers. And there's a process behind that. You can't just pick a school and get to go there. There's still an approval process behind that. What processes have you discussed in having the acceptance of of students?
And just to clarify, Councilor Hart, when you talk about the transfer process, are you talking transfers between, I live in IPS's boundary, but I want to go to a Washington township, MSD Washington? Is that what you're talking about?
Exactly.
So IPS on our side has historically had very, very open policies. So any student who lives anywhere, frankly, in the state can claim a seat at an IPS school if it is open. We give out seats through a lottery, and in that lottery process, we prioritize families who live within our boundary. But if in that lottery process, there aren't a sufficient number of families within our boundary who want the seats, and there are families outside of our boundary in Washington Township who want the seats, they get it automatically. And then we continue to allow families from outside of our boundary to enroll up until the count date in September. After that point, we no longer accept students. And so we don't, for example, some townships check attendance and discipline records. We do not. We take a very, we we will take any student. And so we have very lower, much lower bars than some of the surrounding areas.
Okay, yeah, and that's what I was alluding to, is the the state testing scores, discipline records, and all of those those items. The second question is, and this doesn't ever come up too often, but I'm a parent of two schoolchildren, one in middle school and one in elementary. And you see different varying levels of parental involvement with students. Did your committee go through any investigation of parental accountability between these differing school types, between the choice and the neighborhood, to see if there's any differences between that that may have an outcome for those students?
I I guess implicitly, yes, but I don't think explicitly in the way that you're describing. We know that that poverty brings with it enormous challenges for the family and for the student, and that it is not surprising that we end up seeing slightly different outcomes in performance for families who face those additional challenges that come with poverty versus families who do not. What we focused on was, in our view, what was within our locus of control? What are the policies and conditions that we put in place that either work against the challenges that poverty creates or exacerbate the challenges that poverty creates? And so as you saw from what I talked through, is this idea that if one of the challenges that poverty creates is instability, a family who may have to mid year find a new place because they can't afford their current place, or the family that needs a different job on a different side of town, and so it needs to their students to be in a different school, what are ways that we can put in place policies that create more stability even if a family is facing instability as created by challenges of poverty? And so I I take your point that that access and resources and a whole host of other factors can either enable more success or can make it more difficult. I think our challenge is what is within our control and how do we create structures that support everyone and create more stability, especially for our students who may be experiencing more instability?
And so just so you know, you know, the only reason I went to college is because I'm a Twenty First Century scholar. So very familiar with everything that you're describing here. And and one of the things that, you know, I don't know what the answer is, right? There's there's a million things that could change. But I know, you know, coming from a household who was a a mother, who was a waitress, there was one thing that, you know, was just very important to her was was education. And that was, you know, just the accountability there as a parent. And I get it, right? There's all sorts of different households, and that's outside your control when when the student goes home. There's nothing you can do about it. And maybe this is beyond IPS, maybe this is something that that is taken up at the state level. But just some, in my mind, I'm just brainstorming and throwing, you know, ideas actually to take back. But if there are ways to incentivize parents to be involved, I think it would go a long way for the students. Because particularly speaking, you know, I've I've seen the examples of, you know, not all students are are students that, you know, go straightforward with the academic process and and just are innately good at school, right? Some of them need extra pushing, and whether it's a parent or which is a coach or where it's it's just somebody in their life. But ultimately, the parent is gonna have the most influence. And if there is a way to, one, show the parent that that level of involvement can drastically determine the outcome for their child, you know, that could be one form of incentive, or or just something along those lines. But just, you know, personally, as a parent today of two children, but also one who's, you know, I've someone who's gone through the school system in Indianapolis, you know, I look at it and see that, you know, when comparing, I think the more we can do to get parents involved in their students' educational career, the more success we'll have with some of these measures that were outlined at the beginning, right? With our graduation rates, particularly. And, you know, I I encourage that more than anything. I think what you're doing is, you know, you're on the right track. I think you have a very hard, hard road ahead of you. And and I wish you the best of luck because at the end of the day, you know, I want to see everything good for all the children in Indianapolis. And so, you know, thanks for you doing, thanks for the presentation, and, you know, happy to help out in any way possible that can can drive future growth.
Great, and thanks for the feedback.
My pleasure.
Great. Any more questions? Councilor Potts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say again, thank you for joining us here. Hopefully, once this plan becomes finalized, maybe there'll be another opportunity for us to hear from you all. And I know it was mentioned during the last committee meeting for the Rebuilding Stronger Committee. But I think a crucial element for this whole process is just going to be the transparent communication with the entire community. And we're happy to do our part as counselors. If there's information we can disseminate to our constituents so that we can share publicly, we'd be happy to do so and be happy to have you back, hopefully, at some point in the future to discuss the future of the plan here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So I'd asked, you know, what can we do to help? And you just said, you know, feedback, feedback, feedback. And so I invite counselors, if you have, you know, anything else after the fact, to reach out to, you know, IPS or to Councilor Potts. I know he has helped out in this immensely. So to help back, to provide feedback for the group moving forward. And we, as Councilor Potts said, you know, maybe we do have you guys come back through once you get, you know, the plan put together. We'd like to see that again. So I don't think there's anything else on the agenda, so we are adjourned.